All right. It is five o'clock. I will open the February twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty five, meeting of the Los Altos Planning Commission. Stephanie, could you please establish a quorum?
Commissioner Steinle.
Here.
Commissioner Disney, absent. Commissioner Ahhi.
Here.
Commissioner Roach.
Here.
Commissioner Mensinger.
Present.
And Commissioner Beninato.
Here.
So we have five members with Commissioner Disney absent.
Great, thank you. There was a mistake in the agenda, and we don't normally have public comments for items on the agenda, but since it was published, we'll see if there are any requests for items not on the agenda?
We do have one speaker.
She's the number one.
For both. Yes.
I've got two for the non-agenda and also the zoning request for Sherwood.
Okay, well, since this wasn't, this was an accident, it wasn't supposed to be on there, we'll give two minutes for items not on the agenda. And I don't know where the, is it, is it over here?
We.
Does that, does that work? Okay.
Good afternoon. Hello, Mayor, hello, planning administrator and city attorney and a clerk and the planning commission. I rise to speak about a public comment that went in from someone requesting a zoning change for property they own on Acacia, where they built a new project, they got it all permitted, there were residential spaces above, they got rented immediately, and then the city, because of the zoning, required there to be commercial spaces on the first.
This is items not on the agenda.
That's right, it's not on the agenda. This is a request from somebody on Acacia. There was a public comment submitted in your packet. It's not on the agenda.
But that had been submitted to this council.
That's what this is about. This whole topic is about the Sherwood Triangle and Acacia. Could you pause the timer?
I thought that when I saw the agenda a couple of days ago, it was simply Sherwood Terrace. In the Sherwood Triangle, there wasn't anything about Acacia.
Well, Acacia is in the Sherwood Triangle, which is what triggered this whole meeting.
Okay, then I'll speak about the, the second issue I wanted to talk about, which is Loyola Corners. Surprise, it's not about the apricot, Richard. You can unbuckle a seatbelt. I live down there, and I used to have an office down there in the Elchek Building, which is the tower building. I'm very familiar with it. Living down there now, I've seen many projects that are vacant for sale, haven't been able to find a buyer. Such, such as the old Bank of America building. There is also the twin medical buildings that are contiguous to it on Fremont. And there's a little triangle where there was a residential commercial project that was close to getting permitted that was aborted because, yeah, it's just not a good location for that kind of thing, just like the owner in Acacia said. So I urge you to put on your agenda, pleegies, at some point in the near future. I don't represent, as a lawyer or broker, any of these properties, these commercial properties on, in Loyola Corners, to change its zoning also to be more flexible, so that people could say, build housing. If you add up all the properties that are vacant now for sale, or have more than fifty percent vacancy for their spaces, where owners are trying to hope for more housing or other more flexible zoning, you might find that you get more projects. And when you add up all the square footage, it's pretty big.
Thank you. All right, so we're gonna start our study session tonight, and we have one agenda item, which is the rezoning options for Sherwood Triangle area. And for those not familiar with this topic, a property owner on Acacia originally reached out to council to, to request a change. She was having trouble renting out the first floor commercial. And, but the second story and the third story, which were residential rented fine. And so she came to council, I believe, to request a change of the zoning on the first floor. My understanding is that was spot zoning, and so that was not allowed. And the council asked the planning commission to look at, should we potentially rezone that area, which is the Sherwood Triangle area, to potentially do something different? So we'll, I think Nick has a, a report to supplement the written report, and then we can ask some clarifying questions and have a discussion and see what we would like to do. There won't, uh, won't be a vote tonight, but we'll just have a discussion.
So just because we're in this study session kind of format, if, I don't know which one you prefer, it's a little bit more clear on that, but it's up to you guys as the commission to look at. So the PowerPoint, what we're gonna talk about is the Sherwood Triangle rezoning. Potential, essentially. So to kind of give a quick summary of what has unfolded prior to this meeting, not too much, other than late last month, so almost a month ago exactly, the city council did consider a private zone text amendment, or if you hear me say ZTA really quick while I'm talking tonight with you guys, that's what I'm referring to, is a zone text amendment. But that specific request came in from an owner that has a property that was recently finished in the last couple of years, that was started during the COVID time and has been completed since then, but is requesting to make a modification to their, their parcel, which was the initial ask when they met with staff, but then understood that they wouldn't just be able to get that through a variance or a spot rezoning, because both of those would not be allowed under the law. So that then necessitated a potential zone text amendment, which would allow for ground floor uses in the CN district. One of the things that I'll kind of cover, even though now we're just looking at an aerial, is one of the reasons why this kind of came before the council, or before the commission now, after the council considered it, is that fundamentally, the CN district, we had just actually put that specific kind of development characteristic of not wanting the ground floor to have the residential on it for the CN district, we specifically talked about during the housing element rezoning. So the council wanted us to look at then actual rezoning, so change of zone, not just a zone text amendment anymore, but a change of the zone of the Sherwood area to be more flexible and create essentially consistency for the area, to allow for redevelopment potential, essentially, but also to help necessitate the ground floor residential for this specific site. If my cursor will allow me to, the parcel that actually made the request is this guy, right smack dab in the middle of the Sherwood Triangle area, which is a three-story, multi-tenant residential complex with some ground floor, non-residential use. So that's what kind of the initial ask was coming from. This perspective, again, is an aerial of the area. I think it does give a really good vantage point, just from Google images, of really kind of the, the development that has been in existence predominantly, and I'll cover it later. This, other than two properties, has not really changed its development footprint in well over fifty years. So little to no development has been essentially enjoyed amongst property owners in the last several decades. That being said, is this aerial vantage, I do just want to point out a couple of things that are a little bit different, or that will continue to be a little bit different in the near-term future. However, no project has been approved for the three sites that are kind of identified in red. But the one that has the kind of larger solar array right here, that building did burn down Christmas night in two thousand and twenty-three. So just over a year ago, so that is the site that is just now been paved and backfilled in the last year due to that fire. So that does not exist anymore. That then further being said is, I don't know if the commissioners are aware, but Armadillo Willys has closed its doors after several years of being in business. The owner put a very nice piece of paper at the front door to kind of explain it's not really due to anybody specifically, not the city, not the property owner, but really just a, a changing of the times in regards to some of the business. The reason why that's kind of important is the property owner owns this half of this building, because it is actually two buildings, and then owns this rear property, which was for storage off-site and a separate building. The site then is owned on the other half by a different property owner, so it's actually split ownership. The reason why it's just important is that that, I do think, is gonna necessitate further changes in the near future, whether or not it's just a business use or the buildings as well. So this kind of conversation, I think, is actually fairly ripe for consideration of the council and also the commission. That being said, just some kind of statistics to kind of share with the commission upfront is the Sherwood Triangle area is actually comprised of forty-two total parcels in the actual triangle. I will at least say is that that's parcels and not condos as well. So there are obviously a couple more quote-unquote properties within the parcels that would expand that number, but of actual land area, we're talking about forty-two. Of that, though, what I do think is somewhat important is that there is, all forty-two are designated the TC or the thoroughfare commercial land use designation in the general plan. And then when you go to zoning, there is thirty-nine of them are designated commercial neighborhood or CN, and three of them are designated in zoning as office administrative. And I'll touch on why those statistics are interesting as well as important for us to consider as we move forward with this process. So the Sherwood Gateway Specific Plan is the full name of the Sherwood Triangle area that we always commonly refer to it as, was originally adopted in nineteen ninety-nine, and one minor modification made in two thousand and eight. Since then, the document has remained largely a vision document. It was written very similarly to the now eliminated and inconsistent Loyola Corners specific plan that we got rid of about a year and a half ago as a part of the housing element process because of the subjective criteria. We would have essentially had to rewrite that specific plan similarly to the Sherwood specific plan. It's largely unenforceable as it's written and stands today. There's the quote that's actually in there, and I think it's important to kind of identify, is that in the actual document in itself, it says, quote-unquote, "In order for the specific plan area to develop consistent with the goals," so there's a misspelling on my slide, "and objectives of this plan, the envisioned improvements will need to be funded." That's not this current council or recent councils' problem or issue. However, no funding has been allocated to improve the Sherwood area, and no funding mechanisms were ever established or approved by the property owners for such improvements. And that does include taxes or special assessments and so on. Julie? They can hear you. So of that, the forty-two parcels, forty-two of the parcels are in total, but only two have ever been redeveloped in the last, ironically, the last about decade for those two. But then since then, there has been absolutely no new buildings since their original development. Some minor modifications, but nothing that would exhibit something that would be considered a new building by the amount of construction or additions to the properties. So kind of touching a little bit back to the general plan versus zoning. The existing designations, as mentioned, is we have TC or thoroughfare commercial for the general plan designation, and CN and OA for the zoning designations. The reason why that is important to kind of call out is our general plan mirrors our zoning code. There are a lot of kind of more modern zoning and general plans that kind of try to do that to make it a little bit easier for application, as well as to actually ensure that there is consistency between the two documents. Because when you have inconsistent zoning to general plan, you actually have something that needs to be modified, which is why I'm citing our government code section of six-five-eight-six-zero subsection A, which is that zoning ordinances must be consistent with the general plan and any of the specific plans. So that being said, is we have an inconsistency between the two. So essentially, similarly to the Loyola Corner specific plan, they started the process and never did anything with it, and this has now been a quarter of a century of inconsistency in the area. The, the inconsistencies, really what it should be zoned, but it's open to the discussion tonight of the commission for us to consider and bring back to the commission. But with the land use designation that exists today, it should be zoned CT or commercial thoroughfare. Again, there are ways that we can do something totally different, but then that would necessitate a general plan amendment versus just a change of the zone in and of itself. So to remind us is that our general plan is, in our hierarchy of land use documents, is the highest governing document for the city. So if we want to change the zoning to something that's not CT, we would have to do a little bit more work and kind of study on this. Something just to touch base is that SB three thirty or the Housing Crisis Act, it does prohibit local jurisdictions from enacting laws that would affect, effectively reduce the legal limit of the new housing units that could be constructed on a site. So that is administrative or regulatory barriers. Obviously, right now, we're talking about regulatory. And so the city is precluded from changing the density or intensity of the sites to a lower threshold than what's established today. So just to orient the conversation is that the height is the, is actually the minimum that's allowed there now. We cannot reduce it, and we cannot reduce the density. Now, I will say, between the two zones that are in effect now and what we would potentially consider with CT, is there is no density threshold for those in our zoning code. So we're actually fine on that for an apples-to-apples change. Now, a little bit of something that's just a part of a little bit of kind of looking at the bigger picture and to kind of help frame some stuff to have the commission understand where we're thinking internally from city staff perspective, is that we have two existing zones, one that's in effect right now for the entire Sherwood Triangle area, and then the CT zoning, which is kind of the immediate, what makes sense essentially zoning because of what the land use designation is. Again, the commission could consider a different zoning district, however, that will be more involved, as mentioned. So if the commission were to consider the CT zoning, I would recommend doing a blending of what is the CN zoning district standards and what the CT zoning standard districts, standards are. As you can actually see, is in a horizontal plane, the CN district actually has less restrictive requirements. In a vertical plane, CT has a less restrictive. So we're kind of setting the floor, so to speak, for the height is by utilizing, in this kind of table format, the height from the CT district in the new CT, so retaining that. And then essentially shaving off anywhere between five to ten feet of setback requirements that are established today in the CT zone. The reason why I'm recommending that as a consideration for the commission is that I did open up multiple of the approved projects for ECR, which is our area of CT, and that's really what we're seeing. Not perfect, there are some that are a little bit different and ebbs and flows. Not very many people are going exactly to zero foot lot lines, but they're, they're not doing the, the standards that are in the code today. So we're kind of, this is a kind of a newer planning approach that I will just at least share with the commission that jurisdictions are trying to consider and get the commissions and the elected officials to kind of understand is you, you stop incentivizing people from using density bonus as much as when you create the ballpark that they want to play in just by your code regulations. It helps to streamline it for them as well as the city, and then that is how you retain kind of the local control, which has always been the considerations. So this is kind of somewhat of a way to kind of somewhat blend that to hopefully kind of maintain as much local control of standards that could be in effect in the future for us. And so with that, that's kind of my, a little bit more of a long-winded kind of presentation about where we're at and where we could go. And then obviously, questions and feedback as you guys have.
Great, thank you, Nick. We might want to bring up the, there's a, a map on page six that has a red border around it. At, at least for some of my questions, I might want to use that, but for now, yeah, from the staff report, if it's easy for you to do. Yep. It's page six of the packet. But why don't we open up to commissioners? I, I guess we don't need to do questions and then discussion, we can just do it all at once, right?
There is a public comment, so we.
Oh, yeah.
She left because she, she, yeah, she, she took her public comment as, for an item not on the agenda she didn't understand. So she just spoke early and left.
But what she said about Loyola Corners also counts then for Acacia, I suppose.
All right, so, so, well, we, we can do public comment at some point, but I was gonna do that after we had questions for, for Nick, so.
There's no public, so.
Well, we'll still ask the question, if you don't mind. So let's, let's do questions. Any, any questions for staff? Please. Use your mic, just so we're all on the record here.
Sorry. Going back to what you were just saying about you want local control of standards and how you do that, I want to make sure I understand what you're saying. So in the chart that you had, are you saying then by going to the fifty-five feet, the sixty feet, the forty-five feet, effectively, no one will really go above that, so they won't be asking for additional concessions or density bonuses? I, I'm a little puzzled how that gives us local control, because they could still come in, couldn't they, and say, no, we want to go to seven stories?
Yeah, that, I mean, that is correct, and, and that, I don't want to give that misconception as that there, we're not gonna see height increases.
Right.
But we have to remember is that the, the commission, or not the commission, the developers are requesting anything from height setbacks, and fundamentally, there are, it, it depends on who's impacting. Some people that are gonna be the immediate neighbors right next to it, you build a two-story home next to a single family, and they're immediately impacted. It doesn't matter if it's two or five, but they do have an immediate impact is when you have the setbacks that start getting manipulated. The, the height is the one thing that I will say is you're, we're gonna kind of be in the, the sweet spot of, you know, that, that's kind of gonna be the ba, the bare minimum that the developers are gonna probably ever do, but they are gonna seek higher. But you want to try to have the, the concessions and the waivers kept to a minimum, because there are developers that we work with regularly that are not wanting to go, other than height. That's really kind of the one that we, we can't really get away from, unless you remove the height limit, which I'm not suggesting we do, because it does help to kind of create somewhat of a counterbalance. Because if someone came in here, just to the kind of the argument sake of what you're kind of bringing up, is some folks have said, well, what if, well, can I come in and use density bonus for a ten-story project? No, because there, there's a way for us to do the financial modeling and be able to disprove that that's not necessary for your financial feasibility of the project, and we have done that.
Because I, I have the impression that rarely happened, because the burden's on the city to do that.
And we took that burden on, and the developer left and left the table, withdrew the application. So it is possible, but the burden and financial burden and time commitment is on us to use the financial analysis to do the work. And that's a very specific prototype that the individual is seeking, which would not have been able to be supported. But the height is the one that's gonna just be the rub for us. I think also El Camino Real is where you're gonna see higher heights as well as densities for all of us in all of the jurisdictions.
So it's very likely if we're saying the fifty-five, sixty, forty-five, it's gonna be higher than that?
Yeah, I mean, based on what we have approved, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Richard?
My question sort of follows up on the, the setbacks and the, what the developer's gonna ask for. If you kept the existing side setbacks, and then I come in and the developer comes in and says, well, we're gonna build for low-income housing, and what we'd like to do would be to reduce the site setback. If you kept the existing, say, of the, the side yard setback at ten and fifteen, if you kept it, then you could negotiate, and they say, well, we really like five and, and ten feet, you can give them five and ten, and ten feet. Whereas if you give them five and ten feet, now you end up with nothing. At the point, they say, well, you know, you're, you're back at zero. So would it, is, is there any basis for making it more than you're proposed in terms of the setbacks? I, I heighten everything that's going along with?
Yeah, so, I mean.
I mean, it's just negotiation.
Yeah, the, I mean, the city staff, I mean, that, that's up, that's really what planning is in today's world in California when it comes to a housing development. We are, we're negotiating the, for the city standards all day long. That's, that's what it is. Even design review for single-family homes is, is a negotiation for us, I mean, really. Just because of the way that the laws are and kind of trying to finesse and try to kind of keep a little bit of the community kind of character and kind of what people are wanting to desire, but also the reality of what developers need.
So why wouldn't you keep the existing side yard and things?
And it's a fair argument. What I would say is, is that we're, we have as a part of our housing element, as well as what we've been trying to do with kind of streamlining our code, is to create the environment for kind of a developer-friendly, kind of pro-housing approach to the development, where it provides more certainty for the developers, as well as clarity to the elected and the public officials. Because I could see, and this is, this is the one counterargument, is that as much as the commission is, commissioners that are here and that are on, the commission are great, those terms do expire eventually, as well as so do the council members. And so there's, there's also the train of thought and, you know, school thought, you know, thinking is that will change, you know, depending on who's on, on the elected or appointed body. And so what, with the negotiation approach, is that it also is, there's the room for someone to appeal or object a project. And my negotiation might be acceptable to the planning commission, but under an appeal might not be acceptable to a city council. Again, not saying that that's the environment that we're in today, but it, that's why creating the room of certainty for a developer, so that they know, okay, I can come in and I don't even need to request a waiver, and it's not a negotiation anymore. It helps to create that, that friendliness, as well as the pro-housing kind of aspects that folks are looking for in the, in the development world.
Joe, could I follow up with this?
Right.
Please.
One thing that has not been mentioned is the alley. What impact does the alley have? Can see where the alleyway could be used for maybe access to the parking, if it was in the back.
Oh, can you, they're asking you to get closer to the mic.
I'm sorry. Is the, is there an advantage of having the alley, or we haven't mentioned it anywhere? Is that a method of access to get to the parking, keep the parking off the front, so the building looks nicer? Is there restrictions on that alley? In, in one part in the alley, if you go down it, there's a section built out from one of the properties that goes right, I think, to the edge of the, the alleyway where everybody else is back twenty feet where they use for parking, so. Just, what's the?
Which alley are you talking about?
There's only one alley.
Well, there's a couple. Is, is it the one that goes behind Chef Chews and down that way?
It's the one that comes right off of Sherwood.
Yep.
Just right by the corner, and then it goes all the way to the end.
Okay. Right into the Chef Chews parking lot?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, there's a, a little one where the fire was, that, I wasn't sure which one you referred to. Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
But, so you're talking about the big one?
Yes.
Is that, is that not a street? That's a alley? Because Acacia is the, is the street.
Just use your mic. Do you know where the alley is?
Yeah, so I'm gonna kind of show it from this aerial perspective, since it's kind of a clear shot. So what we're kind of talking about is that we have San Antonio, obviously, El Camino, and then Sherwood, which kind of bounds everything. There really is actually. There really is actually only one legally defined alleyway, which is what goes directly behind and parallel to San Antonio and then back around to El Camino. This, you can kind of see, it's not a culvert, it's just the way that kind of the dip is for the drainage pattern. But this, there is a, what Ben and Otto is referring to is that there's kind of like a very small, tiny, it's a 20-foot alleyway. And that's, that's what's kind of bound there. This is Acacia. This is actually a legal street. But it's kind of a street to nowhere, essentially. But that's because of the dead end with the pattern of kind of development. Now, when any development were to occur, so similarly to how 968, which is the property right here in the middle of the newer guy, they were, they had to do some type of an analysis to make sure that they met like best traffic engineering practices. It's not a full, you know, transportation analysis, it's just which one can be served. Because they're a very small project, it's only two units with some commercial on the ground floor. They would have been able to take it off of either. Let's say someone consolidates some lots and they're going to have 50 units. That study would have to somewhat justify, okay, can they actually take a means off of the rear of the property from the alleyway, or should they do it from the front off of Acacia? There's a lot more public right-of-way in Sherwood as well as in Los Altos than the residents would like to admit, because we don't have defined curbs, gutters, and sidewalks.
Is that alleyway owned by the city?
Yes, so the city owns all rights of way throughout the Sherwood area. Nothing is privately held.
That's it?
Yeah, well, it's a gray area. We don't know what could happen.
All right. Either of you guys? Mike?
I'm not sure that I have any actual questions. I have some things I think are more appropriate to come later. They're more.
Okay, discussion.
Discussion items with question marks at the end of them.
Okay, all right. We'll come back to it, and it's pretty informal today. Maris, anything?
I had one question, but I don't know if it really matters. The, if we were to change this to CT, are there any permitted uses? Basically, are there any properties now that would be conditional once it changes to CT? And if so, does that matter if something is? Like, I'm thinking if something is permitted in the CN but not permitted in the CT, and it's conditional in the CT.
And they would lose that?
Yeah, like, would it just be grandfathered at that point?
It would be illegal non-conforming. And even if the use went vacant, as long as it's reestablished within a certain amount of time, it still is allowed to remain a legal non-conforming use as a site even. So we also have a non-conforming section for uses specifically to this, which we just never have to apply, because we don't really have use issues in the city.
Yeah.
So we would be able to kind of, I can look at that a little bit closer. I will plan on with the CT district anyways, there's some kind of cleanup verbiage-wise of the uses that aren't really necessary. For example, we're not going to call out specifically single use or single-room occupancy, emergency, those are allowed in every district where this types, these types of uses are allowed, so. And we have a totally different chapter of the code, so we'll do some additional cleanup and tweaking just to kind of streamline the ordinance itself. But I do not know of any specific that would create a non-conformity. If anything, it will actually help to equalize some of the existing uses for that specific area.
Okay, got it.
Well, I did think of a question, if I can jump in, because you take your chairman's traditional position at the end of the line. Those houses, there are several little cottages on Sherwood, on the west side of Sherwood. Are those single-family homes? Are they divided? What exactly is the status of those from our perspective?
Like these guys?
Yeah, those are.
Nine, 61?
It's either small office spaces or what look like.
I know at least a couple of them are homes.
Yeah, no, there are, there are some cottages, yeah, that look like they're more than 50 years old and, and, you know, and maybe a lot more than 50 years old. And they don't look as though they could be shared by anybody, but who knows? So are they tech, what are they technically, if anything?
So the side of the street that's kind of backs up to the colonnade, essentially, the opposite side of Sherwood, there is a mixture. Susan's correct in that there are some that are developed as single-family homes. We have one individual that's going to be adding an ADU to theirs as well. And then there are some, though, that are similarly to actually a lot of the structures, like the one that's directly behind Armadillo Lily's, that was originally built 100 years ago as a home. And it's been, it's lost any type of kind of characteristics of a single-family home anymore. So we'd have to look at them a little bit closer just to make sure that there's no inconsistencies for them that would be applicable and kind of bring that back into the CT zone specifically for this, to address it. I can make note of that, or I can just double-check that our non-conforming section will be able to make sure that they can continue to expand or develop for the single-family use that they are.
Yeah, no, I'm not concerned about the ones that are there. What I'm thinking about is if we do shift, and I'm just anticipating what we're going to be talking about, shift to the CT zone. Typically, there are not, no R1 homes in the CT zone. And sort of what we have to think of is not so much what we do with the properties that are there, but what happens when they are no longer going to be there and how we're going to handle that. So that was, I was curious about where that, you know, what we're dealing with there.
Got it.
Yeah, okay. So that's essentially the same answer you gave Maris.
Yep.
Yeah.
All right. All right, I just, I just had one question, Nick. So I was looking at the properties on Chester Circle, which is south of Sherwood Triangle. There's 88 and 84 that are immediately adjacent. And, you know, one of the benefits of this layout is this, this triangle is bounded by major thoroughfares on two sides, El Camino and San Antonio. And then, you know, multifamily developments for the colonnade, and I don't know what the other development is called back there. But it seemed like those two homes are not part of this and might be impacted by some zoning changes. The setbacks being relatively similar, probably not as much, but maybe the heights would impact them more. So any thoughts about the impact on particularly those two parcels which are directly adjacent?
Yeah, so kind of what's being identified, if we could put up the shared screen, is Joe's referring to these two homes that are right here behind an existing, I believe there's kind of just some office administrative stuff that's in this building right now, and then a surface parking lot, which helps provide some of the surface parking for that building. So what we would be looking at is that they would have some type of a height increase immediately adjacent to them. However, their, their setback requirements would have to kind of look at that.
The rear is the same. It's.
Yeah, the rear would be, the rear setback, it would be, under the recommendation was going to be to go to to 20, which is the same as the CN district today. If anything, actually, the CT district would actually help them, because it's zero setbacks for the side setback as well as the front. So in any way that you kind of mix the side yard, front yard, or rear yard, because it is kind of an irregular setup, it would actually almost be more beneficial from a setback allowance rather than a height restriction in that regard.
Okay, great. Any other questions or move on to, we'll?
I have one more.
A discussion or a question?
A question.
Okay.
And that has to do with the property that burned. And in a way, it's sort of irrelevant to what we're talking about, and yet it may be the place where we talk about it. Are there any plans for development of that at this point that we are aware of, even tentatively? The building that burned on Christmas?
Yeah.
Yeah. Because that's.
So we did receive a new application, a preliminary application, that vests them under the existing standards. I would anticipate them to pull their application and resubmit under the newer requirements, just because it's more in line with what the code would allow for them to, so. But there would be a consolidation. However, they are essentially unaware, other than we just informed them that we would be considering something in the near future, considering this.
They could always withdraw and then reapply if they like the newer standards better, right?
Yes.
And what are they currently proposing?
It is a multifamily development, kind of with some of the parcels in the middle that are in between Acacia and Sherwood. That parcel is kind of off to itself, so I wouldn't be surprised if they kind of do something a little bit more creative with that front parcel, because it is separated by the alleyway.
All right, why don't we, well, we'll open it for public comments, and I believe our commenter has left. So are there any other public commenters?
There are no other public comment cards.
Then I will close the public comment period, and let's move on to discussion. So who would like to kick us off?
I can go, if I can get a start. At the last meeting, Stephanie and Jolie and I were talking about how essentially the density bonus law had become a dead letter and this is an example of what happens when that occurs. Because now it's more a function of our inclusionary housing rule than it is of the state density bonus law. And one of the things that we could do, I'm not proposing this, but one thing we could do would be to get rid of the inclusionary, which is not part of state law, it's just something we get to do, and to change the inclusionary housing rules, perhaps to reduce the, that would allow us to reduce some of the the density perhaps and get away with it, I don't know. But that's, I'm not proposing that, I don't know whether it's a good idea or not, but that is perhaps something we should put on page 72 of our to-look-at list. You know, as long as we're looking at, because I think what we have is an opportunity here, quite frankly, and this comes to something that Maris raised, to rethink some of the design standards for the CT zone, because we approved them with the idea that they were going to change. And it has now been some time, there hasn't really been any significant development yet along there, but it is an opportunity to rethink some of those things. And I'm also thinking about one of the ways that we have always thought about the CT zone is that it fronts on El Camino Real. And yet, a significant part of this particular zone fronts on San Antonio Road. And we don't really have design standards for San Antonio Road in the same way that we do, you know, for the, for El Camino Real. And there are other streets that are not El Camino Real, but that are part of the CT zone where there may be some development. So it might be an opportunity for us to plan, to think about how, or as we're looking at these, what we're going to want to do in some of those areas. So that might be something where we, I, this may not be something we want to do rapidly, is my, I guess, the point that I'm getting to, because there are some unthought-of-before consequences that we may wish to either consider or decide we don't want to consider at this stage. You know, and, because San Antonio is unique in that sense. But what if something happens to Village Court? You know, I mean, that's the other place. Or along Los Altos Avenue, because there are commercial properties along Los Altos Avenue on the El Camino Real end, next to the hotel. And those could be developed in certain ways, and what is that going to mean? So it's an opportunity to think about some of the non-El Camino Real frontages in the CT zone, and whether it makes any difference, okay? Let's see, something.
What about the specifics on the, you know, proposed changes to setbacks and heights?
That seemed to me to make perfect sense. We're headed in that direction. I don't think that it would make any particular difference in terms of the way anything is done. We have a fairly generous front setback requirement. That certainly could be changed, particularly since now, first of all, you can't park anymore on El Camino Real. And secondly, we're requiring that drop-off zones and pickup zones and that sort of thing be incorporated in the property rather than being on the street. So we don't need the streets quite so much in that way. So we could have closer to the street, maybe we would have more interesting fronts, that sort of thing, things that would involve sort of a public-private, you know, benches for people to sit on, whatever, you know, that would make it more of a pedestrian-friendly street. I mean, that would give us some flexibility. So generally speaking, the proposed sort of amalgamation of CN and CT, it seemed to me made very good sense. And as Nick was pointing out, up is the only direction anybody thinks of anymore. And the only thing I can think of where we might be able to control that would be by getting rid of the inclusionary housing provisions and, or modifying them in a way that would give us a little bit more control over density without having to worry about the density bonus in the same way. Since we don't have a density requirement anymore. And in fact, I was thinking about this. Basically, all of our multifamily housing zones now do not have, or soon will not, probably will not have a density cap. I mean, that just is the way things are going, whether we set out to do that or it just happened, it's happening. And it will happen. I kind of get that impression from Nick's earlier comments about the way things are going. So, you know, it ceases to be an element of interest and to the extent that we can do any actual controlling, that's perhaps the only way that we can control it. And the advantage is, it's not part of state law. So it's just us, right? It's constitutional, that's the only thing we know, but we don't have to do it. And we might want to think about going back to the state minimums rather than having our higher minimum, which tends to make things larger anyway. Anyway, those are some preliminary thoughts. I mean, otherwise, I think the proposal is a, is a good one. I think it makes sense to make this part of the CT zone. But it is an opportunity for us to rethink what the CT zone will look like. Particularly, since now there's going to be a project of some sort right there. And so we're going to have to come up with something, you know.
All right.
There, okay, so.
Thank you. Anybody else? Comments? Thoughts?
Yeah, I think that there's a couple of things. I think when I first was listening to this from the council when they spoke about it, I think that the CN, kind of this whole thing that we have with the CN is really interesting, because, you know, we really just, after this, we really will just have like four areas that are CN. Rancho, Loyola Corners, Lucky, and Foothill Crossings. And I think it's only a matter of time before Loyola Corners gets rezoned as well, because all it takes is one project, and then you'll have, you know, 50 residents come out for that area. So I just don't know what we're holding on to with the CN. It feels like we're just kind of waiting around to kind of save these kind of older grocery stores. And, you know, I love those grocery stores, but I'm just saying, I don't think we're really doing anything to like develop those areas. We're just trying to protect it. And so it just feels odd that we're kind of just changing this to CT rather than kind of looking at the CN as a whole and figuring out like, what is the ultimate goal with the CN zone? So that's kind of what I first kind of was thinking about. But I think changing this area specifically, because it is on El Camino, because it's a kind of a very populated area, I think it makes sense to turn that into CT. I think it makes perfect sense to completely rezone that. I think in terms of the setbacks that are proposed, I actually think that the side setbacks could be, you know, zero to five, because, and the reason is because everything in the CT zone is also CT. So the sides, I mean, obviously, there's some exceptions, but most of the sides of most of those parcels are also CT. So I think it just makes more sense if everything just had kind of a minimal setback. Also, a lot of the projects that have been proposed on El Camino have, you know, basically asked for a lower side setback. So we're seeing kind of less than that anyways. I think the front setback being 20, or, sorry, is it 20 or 25? Oh, 10. I actually think that 20 makes sense. I think that a lot of the projects that have been proposed on El Camino, having that buffer off El Camino, I think is nice. So I actually like that front setback. And also the 962 Acacia, that one had a zero. And also, the nine-six-two Acacia, that one had a zero, basically could go up to zero, and that project also went to twenty in the front setback. So even that one had it. So it makes me think that the front setback being twenty, I think is, or twenty-five, whatever we want to go with, I think the front setback is important, because it's on El Camino. And I think the rear setback, I actually think that what really matters is the upper-story setbacks. I think that that, you know, we have really good language in the CT design objectives that talk about parcels facing R1. And so I think we already have a really good kind of basis for that. So I think that...
With setbacks on the upper floors?
Um, setbacks and also with views of like balconies going into R1. So I think we've thought about kind of that side next to R1. So I think that what's being proposed for the rear, I think is fine at twenty. I would just say the front, I personally think having that kind of big buffer on El Camino, I think is nice, a lot of the projects have benefited from that. But I do think that the side doesn't need to be, I think, you know, going zero to five, I think makes more sense to me.
What about the front setback on the smaller parcels? You know, like, so it'd be twenty feet on the little guys as well, not just the El Camino ones?
Yeah, I mean, I think that it's tricky, because the nine-six-two Acacia, that's one of the smaller properties in that area, and they had kind of a twenty or twenty-four, I think, I believe, front setback, so like...
Off of Acacia?
Off of that road. So they were, I mean, they didn't need to do that, but they did it because they had some guest parking spots, kind of off that driveway. But it's hard, because you have to plan for kind of the smaller sites and also the much larger ones. So, you know, I could go either way on that. But I do think that the sides don't have to be as much.
And for the houses that are on Sherwood, and there are the cottages, they could then, what you're suggesting is have a building that basically there is no setback next to their cottage?
Yes.
On the side?
On the side.
Yeah, I kind of struggle a bit with that. I mean, it's very likely those houses may get redeveloped, but until they do, I think to have no setback on the side for someone in one of those cottages, I know someone who lives in one of them, I think would be a challenge.
Well, the proposal is five feet interior, ten feet exterior. So if it's a five-story building, whether it's zero or five is probably not going to be a huge difference.
But it's something, it's something.
It is something.
It's something, so to me, I would support what the staff is proposing for the five and ten feet on the side. But I understand your point about the front, I think that does make sense.
So more on the front? So stick with the existing CT on the front?
Yeah. Again, it's hard, because we're trying to think about all of the CT.
Right.
And there's a lot of CT that is on El Camino. And so I think that a lot of these larger projects on El Camino, I think makes sense having that front setback being, you know, twenty. But then, yeah, obviously, the small single-family home, you know, being next to one of these, that's going to be really tricky.
But can they give variance on El Camino if you want to not have such a large setback on the side? Isn't that something they can ask for, not variance, a waiver?
Yeah, like a waiver concession, they could. The only thing that I do just want to point out, because I'm not sure if you're just looking at it from an aerial, Commissioner Ahhi, for nine-six-two for the front yard setback, I'm looking at the staff report from seventeen when the project was approved. They essentially pretty much got put, steered into that by staff and the regulations at that time, is that surface parking for the commercial space is provided in the building's front yard setback. So because we have had a high parking requirement, and this is actually talking with the current owner, that is the one that developed the property, they were really kind of bound to certain design characteristics because of our code, and because they weren't doing enough units to benefit from density bonus. So for them, they actually, similarly to four-twenty-five First Street, with being a smaller project in regards to the height and everything, because they kind of adhere to certain components of the code at that time. This one specifically, though, didn't benefit from density bonus, otherwise they could have waived it. A little bit, though, too, and that's where I was kind of mentioning, is that they have, they have a paved area that's probably about five feet that looks like driveway, but it's not, it's right-of-way. And it's because the Shearwood Triangle area has probably some of the worst pavement area, and undefined pavement area of the city, because of just how irregular the lots are, and the lack of redevelopment as a whole. So I just wanted to point that out, is that that's, it's a little bit irregular than what you might see from an aerial with your, you know, Google image, if that's what you're looking at, but...
So what you're, what you're asking us to think about is rezoning the Sherwood Triangle, and then changes to CT, which would affect all of CT, is that accurate?
That's correct. And just to reiterate, is my recommendations that are before the commission are just based off of what we have been seeing in the CT district, with like our most recently approved projects. I agree from a design characteristic, is that the twenty feet, especially from ECR, would be nice. It's just, it's, it's not really what the developers are kind of accepting at this point. But again, that's, that's just the train of thought for what's being proposed.
For the front setback?
Correct.
Well, could we, just a sec, could we, could we potentially leave it at twenty and allow them to ask for waivers? Or would you prefer it to be at ten and not have them ask for waivers?
My preference would be is to be able to take the negotiation out of the equation to be more essentially streamlined into the review process.
Okay.
But that's just from a, the kind of the environment that we're trying to create with kind of streamlining project review for, and creating the level of certainty for the applicants.
Okay. Richard? Oh, okay.
That was my concern, is the twenty to ten feet, and could we do a waiver? But I see what you're doing, and I perfectly agreed.
All right. So any feedback on what you've heard so far, Nick? Like in terms of the setbacks or anything else?
So development standards-wise, it does sound like the commission kind of agrees with the ones that were proposed on the table and in the report, for the most part. I know there might be maybe some additional considerations that might be more flexibly easy to kind of negotiate, so to speak, in a, in a recommendation with the actual amendments to the code. But that's what I'm hearing.
We're not in the trenches every day, so, you know, I think to some extent we need to rely upon your being in the trenches every day and what's happening. But, I mean, the only ones I heard possible changes were to the side setbacks and the front setbacks. And we've heard arguments, you know, why we might not do that as well, so...
I kind of, I guess I, kind of playing off of how the council, as well as the commission, has been operating, is kind of a straw poll, is I hear the kind of lone wolf on changing the front yard setback, and then I hear the lone wolf on changing the, or not wanting to change, then the side yard's different from what's recommended. That's why I'm kind of suggesting that is kind of the majority of the straw poll.
I think that's accurate.
Okay. The two things, though, that I wanted to at least specifically address, because I don't want there to be a surprise. One thing that I think is a realistic ask, if a potential of as a part of the conversation, is that to take access off of Acacia or Shearwood and not the, and not the, the unnamed alley, I was trying to create somewhat of a name for it, Messi, let's call it that. The alleyway is, we could bring into, because we don't really have alleyways on anywhere else on the CT district, so it will be beneficial just for this area, is that when properties are abutting in an alleyway, we can say that the access is taken off of the primary street. I think that's, just so the commission knows, I think that's highly likely to happen in the future, because of the geometry of the rear of these properties is only twenty feet, where Acacia is forty feet. So it, it does have a lot more roadway geometry than, than the rears of the property.
Okay. So that wasn't in the report anywhere?
It was not in the report, but then, and then also just to further explain, is Shearwood is a fifty-foot roadway geometry, so it is just more highly likely that that won't even be a part of a kind of a decision in the future. It's kind of just more so creating and steering the developers, kind of like what we're supposed to be doing in our code anyways, is, one, what the law and the rules would be for engineering practices, but then obviously what we can control. And I think the access is most likely going to have to be taken for lots that consolidate off of Acacia or Shearwood, because of the transportation.
Do you know the width of the alleyway?
It's twenty feet.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, which is the bare minimum.
And it needs paving.
Yes. Yeah, unfortunately, and the only reason why it's just very going to be highly likely is until enough of those properties turn over, and there's like development requirements of new sites, or the existing sites redeveloped, there's parking, there's trash cans, dumpsters, that it impedes the, what I would be concerned with is actually, it's not for the residents of the area, it's actually for the emergency access, which is really what that's intended to be, is for the flow. And so I just think it's highly likely in the future it would be a required component.
But it provides parking for those properties that face San Antonio. You know, you go through there and you can double park in tandem parking, you know.
How else can you pick up your takeout at Chef Chews?
Well, and that raises a question I was curious about, you may have answered this. Could we make Acacia go away?
Acacia, no, the alleys, the alleys.
No, the alley, I understand, because there's a street that used to be there that has, was disappeared by Chef Chews. And, you know, one solution to the problem is to make the problem go away in a certain sense. Otherwise, we are essentially creating backdoor issues for everybody. And it is a driveway that goes no place, except onto a slightly larger driveway that isn't really that convenient. Whereas we might want everybody to be getting out onto either San Antonio or El Camino Real, and sort of force that, that particular design geometry, if you will. But it sounds as though that we're not really a wise decision.
It's a very irregular configuration, for sure. With the roadways as well as the alleyways, yeah.
Yeah, so we can't simplify it.
It's not, it wouldn't be perfect. At least as a part of this, I'd have to bring in Public Works to kind of start doing some study. We can, as a part of the transportation analysis with the circulation element, this is going to be one of those, they'll ask the consultants when you kickoff conferences, general plan updates, they will ask us if there's specific areas that need special traffic analysis. This will be one of them, our downtown will be another one of them. And then some of the entry points onto Foothill Expressway will also be special study areas as well.
So to be determined?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
All right, do you have what you need from us, or...
And then there was one more component, is the Shearwood specific plan. I would like the commission to discuss its necessity and validity, similarly to Loyola Corner's specific plan. I've kind of touched on it, it's largely unenforceable. I will say, over half the document has to be ignored by staff in our, in our planning analysis, because it's not, it's not compliant. And I would say, close to the remaining half requires multimillion dollars of funding to be provided either by the city or by the property owners.
So choices are revise it or revoke it?
I, I wouldn't say we would revise it, because I would say we would repeal it in its entirety. And then if we wanted to have another specific plan, we would have to start all over again. There's not really a revision process for something that's so egregiously inconsistent with law. The only other thing that I would say about that is, is that a specific plan for forty-two parcels is extremely uncommon. Just as you're creating specialty land use regulations for a very small geographic area. The Shearwood, just so you know, I didn't touch on this, but the Shearwood specific plan as a whole, including right-of-way, is under six acres. That's very small.
So to repeal or not to repeal, that is the question?
Yes.
Okay.
Are there any expectations on the part of anybody there, that any part of that would ever be? I mean, if there have been two developments in fifty years in the area, and whoever's there has been there and has, I mean, does the city hear from the people there saying, why don't you do X, Y, and Z? I mean, Loyola Corners is exactly the opposite, you know, that it's a cauldron of, and everybody knows the plan by heart, and everybody wants this part or that part. Is there anything even remotely like that here?
No, the, I've, the one and only application we've received, like I mentioned, to the commission, that's been received in the last, you know, month for a development in the Shearwood area, is kind of the first contact other than dealing with, you know, some businesses down there for their business and economic development needs, not for anything development or redevelopment-wise.
So if we made the plan go away, nobody would notice?
Yeah, there's nothing really to it, essentially.
And would that go before planning or before the council?
So it would mirror what we did with the Loyola Corner specific plan, which it would be, there'd be, essentially what, in theory, what you would see after tonight is two ordinances. One that would be to amend the CT zone, and then one to potentially repeal in its entirety the Shearwood specific plan.
Any objections to repealing the Sherwood plan?
It's a great idea. If you haven't seen the Sherwood plan in a couple of years, there's that, you know.
At least this one wasn't done on a typewriter.
And then, and then what about the re- rezoning Sherwood Triangle to CT? That would be in that same original ordinance, you said?
Yeah, so that would be, that would be really the, it really will be three actions, essentially. There will be an ordinance to change the land, or zone change. There will be an ordinance to change the development standards that we've articulated tonight. And then there would be an ordinance to repeal in its entirety the specific plan.
Okay. I think you...
Yes.
And that will come back to us?
Yes, as three separate actions as one item, though.
So Joe, do we actually vote on that? I know we're not going to make any...
No votes tonight.
We just sort of talk about it and say this is...
Direction, so Nick can then package it up and bring it back for another discussion.
That way we have another meeting.
Yes, yes.
You have to remember that you didn't like it.
You get paid by the meeting, don't you?
You have to remember you wanted to repeal it. Write that down.
Yes, you're free to change your mind at that point in time. All right, well then, I think we'll wrap this up. We have several items, commissioners' reports and comments? Any potential future agenda items? All right, then we are adjourned. Thank you. Oh, yeah, March sixth was just canceled today? Richard, did you have something?
I did. When are we going to discuss our work plan? Is that going to be a... Okay. Thank you.
Yes.